I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the student hearing has been postponed. Is that right or can't postpone?
Postponed.
By their request, they have heard, right?
Yes.
We're saying there that the student is suspended.
It's home night.
Received, yes.
Oh, well.
All services, yes, alright.
Well, it's been like that for a while, hasn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Because they've asked for convenience. And, uh, but I think we have attended to date, don't we, the 20th? I think the next meeting, I think this is what I understood today.
And we wanted to ask if you all wanted it, um, at a different, any different dates other than the board meeting, if you wanted it during the day or anything, and if so, you could give us some dates then we could send it, otherwise we've given them the next fourth meeting date.
Okay.
Alright, we made a point.
Okay, I need a motion, second to approve the minutes on February the 21st.
I know.
Smith, Smith, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes. Public comment, I want to hear it.
Go on, Smith.
Okay, I need a motion, and a second on administrative items.
I move.
Martin, take briefly. Okay, Trish, you want to guide us through them and explain them to us?
I will do my best. A is a student to ride the bus in his GED program. On B, um, it is a student from Lincoln to Logan, a sixth grade student.
Now, they don't have anything other than those, but we've taken the other three off.
Yes.
All the other three?
Yes, the other three have been removed, uh, for a later, later time.
Okay.
The only one, um, is Lincoln to Logan, a sixth grade student.
So, oh, that's for next year.
Yes. Um, C, an agreement, uh, with better grade tutoring to provide supplemental education services, March 1st through the 15th, um, and this is for, um, services at Guyan Valley Middle School. And it's provided, you know, from the Title I.
Are these students, Trish, are they identified specifically, or how many, you know, how they identify, which students they're working with? Those are any difficulties?
Yes, uh, and, and you offer the supplemental services to the parent, the different types of services do they want, um, particular, um, teacher, you know, I think that's a type of a service, um...
We used to offer Sylvan, I'm not sure if Sylvan is still in business, but that was one that was chosen.
Those are your nine entities out there.
Is this a new one?
This is a new one.
Is this a new one?
We're using, I mean, I don't remember this name.
I think it is, I don't recognize it either.
Green now.
You know, not only been out of the way from either one.
We need tape recorded?
Not, it's not working right, so I didn't bring me, I've got a new one, but I've used it just exactly right.
I didn't want to have trouble.
No, no.
Queen, free.
That's what Sean's for.
The, uh, this is just an additional one.
Oh, this is an additional one, so we already have others that we're working with.
There's just another option?
Are all of them $59 an hour, did you know?
No, I'm sure not.
Right.
I'm sure not.
So, why is?
They must have found that this was a, uh, something that was beneficial, you know, and Charlene has approved this to go as one of the supplemental programs.
So, do you understand that we're using different companies to provide these supplemental services at different schools even?
I know that RISA, we use RISA in the past, as far as I know, we continue to use RISA. Uh, Sylvan was mentioned, we've had a few students who have opted to use or parents have opted to go with Sylvan, and this one is one I don't recognize. It is new.
So, at, at any school that we're offering services, a parent can, we have a list of possible, and this is one of, and they have different, they have varying amounts of charges back to Title I?
Yes.
Yes, they do. You know, if it's a tutor, a teacher, you know, that would be a different amount versus whatever Sylvan had used, but I don't, we're not utilizing, I don't think they're on the list anymore. Um, I'd have to get the list to see what the exhaust.
Well, I, I just wondered why some were charging, why $59 an hour, why some others might be charging $30 an hour. Is there really a difference in the service per se? Is it more intensive? Is it more hours? Is it, you know, is it better, or how, and so how is it better?
I'll have to ask Charlene, because I know she's the one that does the, the list. I'll get more information for you, okay?
I know most of our students use the utilized RISA for the service. I mean, we've had maybe one or two, to my knowledge, that's even used Sylvan in the past, and the reason they did so was because on their own, at some point, they hadn't utilized Sylvan and wanted to continue to work with that agency.
So, so this would just simply be agreement that we would, they would be on our list, and it's still up to the parents to choose?
That's true.
Yes, yes.
And they aren't at the school they would go to, these people, do we know that?
RISA, they, they come to the school. And, um, I'm assuming that this person with his weight of...
During the school day, do we know that?
No.
It's after school.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, it'd be after school.
Okay. Uh, an agreement with Christine Schimmel to provide professional development for the middle school staff at Guyan Valley on March the 25th, according to the terms of the agreement. This is during their retreat, uh, and she had provided, uh, this same type of professional development, I think, previously to West Hamlin, um, staff, and they felt that, uh, it was very beneficial, and so Guyan Valley wanted to, um, have her to do professional development for them. Um, E is the agreement with Stonewall Resort to provide the lodging, the meals, and the meeting for Guyan Valley Middle School staff, uh, March 23rd through the 25th for their retreat. Uh, F, the following adult student is going to be able to participate in the Teen Parent Initiative class at LCHS for the remainder of the year. G, uh, the transfer of outdated equipment, the alignment lift from the LCHS Automotive Technology Class to the Mid-Ohio Valley Technical Institute in St. Mary's. H, yes.
Excuse me, just one second. So, this does not have to go to auction?
It does not. Uh, actually, Mr. Kermings, um, had a conversation with Mr. Midkiff, and he says this is something that they have, um, the CTE teachers have, um, been doing this for some time through, uh, their networking, and they do, um, share the equipment if one school no longer needs it, they do, uh, provide it to another school. Is that the way that you have explained it?
As long as it's a nonprofit organization, we can do this. Mr. Kermings is concerned about this particular piece of equipment, one, it is, it's in need of repair, it's going to cost a little over a thousand dollars to repair the piece of equipment, which this school is willing to do so in order to add it to their, uh, I guess their garage bay area that they have for their students.
Please, it is like the one governmental entity can give something to another one, right?
Yes.
Like even the syllabus.
Yes. Reportables. Another school giving this to that, and this is covered in, not our board policy that you set in us.
It's, uh, purchasing policies and procedures?
Yeah, purchasing for the school.
So, you can look at this.
Okay, yes. H, uh, an out-of-county trip for Lincoln County High students competing in the West Virginia Skills USA State Competition in Martinsburg, March of 29th through April the 1st. They'll be transported by charter bus. The expenses will be paid from the levy money, the levy funds, instead of location funds, and this is an instructional activity. I, um, the designation, uh, as a specialized healthcare provider for the following service personnel, uh, for the remainder of the school year, Ms. Chandler at Guyan Valley Middle School. J, some out-state travel for the following employees. Uh, first one is Lisa Chapman, Carrie Banks, and John Owen Davis will be attending the REED 180 National Summer Institute Workshop in New Orleans, this is paid through Title I funding. If you are not familiar, you're with REED 180, it's a program that is utilized through several of our schools for students that have deficiencies in reading, and this is a program that has been purchased, uh, in order for a supplemental, uh, program, and it has shown, um, the students have shown great, uh, progress through this program. Um, the next one, Mr. David Roberts will be attending a, um, conference, um, on, Stuart Z, a children facilitator, he's going to be a facilitator training, this is through the counseling grant. He will be coming back to train our counselors. Now, that's during the time of, um, West Test, it's an online writing, and, uh, counselors, you know, will be involved in our training here, or, uh, testing here, I'm sorry. Um, and that's basically part of the reason that Mr. Roberts will be able to go and come back and do the training. The third one, Mrs. Forkman, Mr. Talling, Sowers, Ms. Atkins, Ms. Farah, Sprouts, Smiling, Ms. Harless, Sowers, Coaster, Ms. Belcher, Ms. Richardson will be going to Philadelphia for a, uh, staff development through the Art and Science of Teaching Conference. Uh, this is paid, uh, from county staff development and Title II funding. They will be traveling, um, they're cartpooling, they're trying to cut down on the expenses as much as possible, um, because that is not a Title I school, and that, you know, their teachers a lot of times do not get to take advantage of some of the, uh, other trainings that the Title I schools are able to find.
So, they're going to be gone Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and will they be back on that day?
Yes.
They're moving back to school?
Yes.
Twenty-six?
Yes. Okay. Yes, those were the, the dates. Mr. Rexey, um, will be, uh, going to Princeton, New Jersey to participate in the statewide standard setting study conducted by the ETS, uh, and he was selected through that ETS and is funded. We are not funding, um, that particular trip. Um, the next one, uh, Mrs. Bryant, Mrs. Missingers, Mrs. Hammerman, Mrs. Nelson, Mr. Hartley, Mr. Roy, Mr. Da, Ms. Davis, Mr. Atkins, Shortridge, Mr. Watson, Mr. Altizer, Ms. Chapman, Mr. Atkins, Ms. Chapman, Ms. McClanahan will going to, and Jeremy Brunting will be attending the Model Schools Conference, and that is a Title I funded, um, conference. K, um, is the superintendent's suspension without pay effective February 16th, 2012, and the termination of contract service personnel effective immediately as provided in the code, uh, 18A dash two dash eight for violations of the employee code contact. L, the following new...
Can we back up, take a second?
Uh-huh.
And does this individual ask for a hearing?
No, he did not. He was given the, the right to.
Can, can the person be named? No?
After that.
After we vote.
Can, can we discuss that before? Can we go into executive session, just briefly, to discuss that?
Death effect, sir.
Yeah.
I move that we go into executive session to discuss this individual that has been terminated.
Okay.
I'll say it. Now, do you vote?
Yes, Mr. [inaudible].
Yes.
They won't be on, Sean.
Through that one. Come home to catch up carrying their laundry out of my house, that they did one time, they were supposed to be cleaning my house, they did their own laundry, so, another entrepreneur. Using my detergent.
I'll ask for a vote. Superdame recommendation.
Okay.
I'd make a motion on item K to uphold the superintendent's suspension without pay as stated on the agenda.
Do I have a second?
And, and termination, Steve.
I'll say, well, I am, yeah, I was saying the whole thing, I was stating, I said as stated, which includes termination.
Second by Workson. Now, do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes, vote.
Yes.
Okay, L. Shall I go ahead?
Could I get the name, the name of the person?
You want to give him the name, Rodney Ackidge.
Thank you.
Okay.
L, the following new or revised policies for, uh, 30-day public review and comment. And the first one is a new one, it's employment of personnel in summer school programs. Uh, and the second one is the service personnel staff evaluation. It had just been, um, inadvertently left off when you all did all of your other policies. Um, when we reviewed the other ones, we knew one. Back to you.
I, I'm just curious, it was not new, we just, we accepted the others and made that sweeping...
Right.
Lawn, yes.
It just, it had just been left off.
So, all we're doing is adding it back into our policy manual, basically.
Yes, that's, uh, it's, we didn't change anything, it's the same as it had been before. The only revised thing on it, I think, was the date.
All right, so, just, just clarification, now, these are going to be on 30-day public review.
Yes.
Will they be, excuse me, online?
Yes, we'll have Danny, Danny put it online.
That would be true of all policies.
Yes.
Okay. Well, my other question you've answered, because I thought, I was wondering if this was based on any state revisions in this second policy, but it's not, that answers that question. But I do, as I perused the policy, I had a couple of things I wanted to ask about, but many of my questions you've already answered. But if we go over to the second page, under six, evaluation criteria for regular school service personnel or employees.
Yes.
In 6.1, um, now, this first person here that's worked zero to two years of experience being evaluated two times a year, which is standard, I suppose. Now, the first evaluation would be conducted five days after the first semester, so that's in January or whatever. But the second would be about the second Monday in April, and the reason I ask about this is realizing that the, should a person not be satisfactory, doing a satisfactory job, and it might be necessary to recommend their termination or something, how does that fit in to when that has to occur by like February, is it still February the 1st?
We think.
Yeah.
It, it's, uh, can be changed.
But, I mean, even if it were, uh, at one time it was what, April the 1st or something like that? But, in this state of the second Monday, April, I'm just trying to reconcile how that works when you're evaluating that person for the second time, and the due date for an unsatisfactory performance has already passed, do you understand what I'm saying? That if you wanted to see their termination, their second evaluation hasn't occurred yet.
You, I could recommend to you guys at any time, whether it is before or after an evaluation for termination.
Well, but that just would be for cost, right?
Cost, but if it's for performance, um, I want, I want to get, go through that. Performance-wise, if we put someone on a plan of improvement, you know, we would have to allow them a certain amount of time in order to see if they are going to improve.
Right.
Then, if they have improved, you know, then we're not going to be looking at termination. But if they haven't, it would be after a second bad evaluation, after their, their improved plan, before we can terminate them on performance.
Well, and that's, that's kind of what I'm asking, let us assume that, that this first evaluation that was done in January wasn't satisfactory on performance, not on cost.
Right.
Then on performance, it wasn't satisfactory, so now, and that person even went on a plan of improvement for 30 days or whatever, and it still wasn't satisfactory. Um, and now, the policy says that the sec, by the, by the second Monday in April, that second evaluation is going to occur. Well, the time for a performance termination has already been passed.
No, no, that's only if it's during that personnel season. I can go ahead and, uh, recommend to you guys to terminate at any, at any time. It doesn't have to be within personnel season.
You can go for performance and not for, you know, one of the...
Not, mm-hmm, yes.
And these are just maximum deadlines, because, I mean, actually, if there's an issue with job performance, that observation evaluation can take place at any time. This is just saying the absolute last date that you can conduct that first evaluation is five days after the first semester. It can happen before that.
Okay, where does it say that, Jim?
I'm looking at 6.1, which is the second page, the bottom.
Well, that's, okay, now, where does it say what you just said, though? Because we're a person, I mean, I, seems to me like I've read that in there somewhere also, that you can evaluate somebody at any time.
And item six, uh, says evaluation criteria for regular school service employee, and then 6.1 talks about the date by which the first evaluation as well as the second one is to be conducted.
Right.
That's just the absolute deadline, that it has to occur.
Okay.
Uh, it can, it can take place anytime prior.
Now, that part there, show me where that is.
Oh, no, that, I can't tell you where it's at in the policy.
Well, I think it's in here, um, because I, I think I remember reading it.
I, me too, and I read through this, uh, Steve, and I'm thinking, I know, I know it says somewhere that you can evaluate at any time. 6.3.
6.3? Okay, it's been more frequently than once. Well, that's, it's certainly, I think it is.
When, uh, when this was adopted, is this policy for service personnel, was not this, the same policy as the state? The state sent this down here?
It was mirrored after, after the professionals.
It is, uh-huh. So, the state didn't send something down that says, here's the service personnel evaluation policy?
They only have certain criteria within the code that service personnel must follow, and, and so what Lincoln, what I understand, uh, Lincoln just mirrored it, their service personnel after the professional, you know, so that they, it, it was real, uh, very similar to the, uh, professional.
So, are those the same dates as professional?
No, uh, the dates are different.
Okay.
Well...
Maybe it's in some cases.
I, I think I, somewhere in there, I read that, where you can do it at any time.
At any time.
So, it's, nothing is essential, super secret, which goes 1826, 1832.
That may be something we want to add, you know, on, as we're...
Well, that's, yeah, maybe during our review, we can look at that, because I wondered if, you know, that maybe, because 18A26, I think, applies to this termination business, right, of service personnel, um, and that's where I saw the paper one day, and whether it's still valid or not. But that's my only concern, is that we don't restrict ourselves, because, you know, we want our, you know, as we've seen before, we want our administrators to evaluate people in a timely fashion, and that way, if something needs to be recommended, it can be done, and, uh...
And even though we think that's implied in there, if it's not stated, we may, we may miss the point.
Right, so maybe we could research.
That word says it specifically.
Yeah, and then maybe even stated somewhere in there, so it's clear to our principals of those who do evaluations, that if, you know, if I have a, an employee that's not doing a satisfactory job, I might do that evaluation sooner.
Absolutely.
That's 6.42, talks a little bit about that.
Well, on 9.1, it says, uh, for an employee whose evaluation is unsatisfactory may occur when the supervisor determines he or she needs such assistance.
On 9.1, did you say?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's getting into a plan of improvement for employees.
And I think, I think, I agree with you, Steve, you want it to be very clear so that there aren't any misunderstandings about when, you know...
Well, I just know, as you, you, things do happen, and they get appealed at other levels, they say, well, you know, you've got to follow your own policy and all that kind of business.
We heard that. That's, we want to be, I say, we did follow our own policy, and it's very clear.
We've got 30 days to look at it. Yeah.
Send my comments.
That's all I have, Mr. Kirk.
Okay, and L, then, um, a professional service room at Twin Falls Resort to provide lodging, meals, and comfort room and equipment, March 16th and 17th for West Hamlin Elementary Professional Staff, and that's being paid by Title I funds.
Everybody ready to vote? Okay, well, I'll take a vote on all of them except K, which we've already voted on.
Aye.
Yes.
How do you vote? Oh, yes?
Yes.
Okay, need a motion, and a second on finance.
I move.
Martin?
I second.
Smith, want to say Bernie?
Um, okay, we have invoices of $2,039,014.67, and they're in this little box here. Um, and then we also had to do a revision to our revised salary schedule, there was a couple errors on the beginning and ending dates, and again, we're not changing the pay dates, it's just changing the beginning and ending dates. And item C is a memorandum with the West Virginia Extension Agency, which relates to the $15,000 that we give to the 4H, and it's in our levy, and we'll actually approve it when we approve our budget for next year, but they just need a signed document from our board, so we're going to go ahead and give them a signed document for their part.
Mr. Prin, I'd like to recuse myself from payment of check number 39533, vendor 8200, Lincoln Agency for $100.
Okay. What was the number on that again?
Yes, check number 39533, vendor 8200, Lincoln Agency for $100. As I said, I refuse myself.
I guess I need to recuse myself from 39060.
396.
Second one down.
390 what, I'm sorry?
60. I don't know whether that would have anything to do with...
Is that too, Carol?
It's the adding.
Oh.
His retirement.
Oh.
Would that have anything to do with it?
No, I don't think so.
No, because that's a class, that's a whole class.
We vote on ourselves.
Yeah, we vote on ourselves all the time.
Okay.
Sure as a sister. You two do that, I'm at disruption, us two.
He, he better.
Well, I guess if they do, I can...
Well, we vote on travel, pay ourselves, we play our own. Well, I voted on Larry Joey, gets a retirement check.
But this is a vendor.
Well, I mean, this is, there's exceptions to those rules, I mean...
I don't think I have any vendors.
Okay, but item C, I want to abstain from that, because I'm on the Board of Directors of the Western Extension Service that's approved this. And as you'll note on the document there, I've signed there. So I want to abstain on that item there, although I fully support that. Just the fact that I was on that board, I abstain from item C on that.
Are we ready to vote? Okay, we're voting on all items, except, Donna Martin wants to abstain from check number three nine five three, is that right, Donna?
Three nine five, three three, yes.
Three three, okay. How was everyone else vote on that one? All except...
But yes.
But yes.
Okay, now, on C, item C, Mr. Prichley wants to abstain from that vote. How was everyone else vote?
Yes.
Oh, yes, on item C. Now, we've got everything covered.
Now we're going to vote on everything else.
Everything else. Gosh.
I'm probably going to get on the minute records, a separate vote for check number three nine five three three, list her as abstaining. And then, a separate vote for the Extension Service, it is a separate vote.
And it's a separate vote.
You'll do it.
We end up for the rest of the check.
No, well, we, no, we haven't voted for this. We just voted on that one vendor there, on you. Now, we'll vote on the remaining vendor. How was everyone vote on the remaining vendor?
Yes.
Oh, yes. And... Two.
We're good, we're good.
We're good, we're good now. Yeah, no last thing from...
Okay.
Everyone's good, you went through good, Bernie.
Okay. Now, we'll need a motion on second on personnel matters.
Motion.
Prichley?
Sir.
Rockson? Okay, Chris?
Okay, maybe I've got a revised schedule. And I'm going to tell you what changes were made. Hopefully, I won't miss anything from the original one. On first, we'll go through the employment of the short and long-term professional personnel. A one and two, it's the same. Employment of professional personnel, B, that remains the same. C, transfer of service personnel. The two names remain the same, but C two, this happened today because of a drawing. Lisa Ball, going from Duval pre-K eight, Cook two, half-time, to the LCHS Cook two, pending return of a regular employee. That was changed from, I think, the other one that you guys may have had. D, employment of substitute service personnel. All of that is the same, the Ds, one through the D eight. E, transfer of professional personnel, E one and two are the same. F, employment of extracurricular personnel, the F one through F seven, those are all the same. G, the reemployment of short and long-term professional personnel for two thousand twelve thirteen, all of those are the same. There were no changes. H, reemployment of short-term, short and long-term professional personnel pending the renewal of their certification for two thousand twelve thirteen school year. Those are all the same, no changes. I, reemployment of professional personnel to be issued a probationary contract for the school year two thousand twelve thirteen. There was one change in that Kelly Burns, originally, we had at Hart's pre-K eight, but it's changed to Guyanville Middle School teacher. That was the only change in that section. J, a reemployment of professional personnel to be issued a probationary contract upon renewal of certification for the school year two thousand twelve thirteen. No changes there. Reemployment of professional personnel to be issued a continuing contract for school year two thousand twelve thirteen. No changes. L, employment of professional personnel to be issued a continuing contract upon renewal certification for the school year two thousand twelve thirteen. I, M, reemployment of service personnel for school year two thousand twelve thirteen to be issued a probationary contract. No changes. N, reemployment of service personnel for the school year two thousand twelve thirteen to be issued a continuing contract. No changes. O, reemployment of substitute service personnel for the school year two thousand twelve thirteen. There are no changes. P, these are terminations of extracurricular professional and service athletic contracts. There are no changes in that section.
You have to do that every year?
Yes, sir.
Even professional people?
Yes.
We can't do the wrong getting on that.
Here's some, on the next page.
There's some.
Oh, and serve.
Yes.
Professional coaches are...
There's a one.
We terminated all professional and service and other coaches.
And they have the right to come back the next year. If they, when we talk about coaches, we're looking at, let's see. Most of these, if you'll look at, the coaches that you see here are...
P seventy-five, old lady.
Yes. And most of those are...
Well, that all service.
Most of those are service. Or not, they're not professionals.
Okay, they're a community people.
Yes, yes, and we have to post, we have to do this because all coaches' positions are professional. And these are, and that's why she's titled that, because they were filled by non-professional people.
Just relax.
Understanding.
If it was a professional, we don't terminate them.
No, they're not on here.
That's one of our thoughts.
It's called a professional contract, because it is a professional position.
They have to give a professional change to apply for next year.
Yes, these are non-professionals.
But if I'm a professional coach this year, do I have it next year?
Yes, they, unless you resign.
What issue do I have?
If you resign.
You're going to resign. I'll leave care of that.
And I guess that's why the...
You'll sneak out of here, Carol.
The, on the policy we looked at a while ago on evaluations, that all these, has that term excluded, coaches in it, isn't it?
Yes, yes, because that's a professional position. And if a service person is in that position, it is only because no professional applied for it. And we need to prove that before we can enter it.
Trish, on G there, the first one is that Eddie, because they usually put him down as Albert.
A G, are we going back to G? Yes.
Yeah, that's...
That Eddie.
Did we just call him Eddie, yes, that's Eddie.
Okay.
Chicken strike. That's his subject.
The change here for Q was the same, but we added Mr. Dunkle in his resignation as a teacher for next school year and as a soccer coach, as an assistant, which was effective March fifth. His teacher resignation is effective June third. So that was the change within that Q. I think those were all the changes that were made to this one.
We can assume that here, we're not going to have track at Hamlin Middle School, right?
Yes, you can assume that. Now, we have, we are entering into an agreement...
With Guyanville?
With Guyanville Middle School for those students that want to participate, to be able to go there.
Good.
And that's SSAC, yes, SSAC, we're following their advice, direction, has to have to.
And there's no other, is that the only track team now? In the middle schools, it's just going to be Guyanville?
What are Hart's kids wanting to track? Can they go down there also?
That's a good ten students.
Well, they have to not have a coach, right? If there's a coach, now, tell, how is that Jeff?
If it's an issue where they don't have enough students to have a team, then they would have the ability to go to closer school to participate. If it's a situation where they have enough students to have a team, but they don't have a coach, then they can't move. They have to find a coach, which is recently learned this.
But right now, we're just saying that Hamlin can go to Guyanville.
They have three young ladies that wish to...
But now, Duval and Hart's, what's their status?
No interest.
They don't have a...
Or coaching track.
Okay, but if they had three kids in Renner's, that they could go to Guyanville. Well, they could also go to Chapman's, they'll do some...
That's an option.
So all middle school students have the opportunity to draw a state track, you know, somewhere?
Yes.
I have learned there are some school districts in West Virginia that has, they may have four or five middle schools, middle schools that are in their county, and only one middle school track team, but they all come to...
Makes sense.
Which I didn't until recently.
Is that true, more so than track that would be in seminary?
Yes.
Minor sports, golf.
Cross-country, those types of sports.
Do you want anybody to question?
I have a niece and a great niece on here. Do I need to say anything?
Those people are fully certified in State of West Virginia to teach. There's no legal reason for you to stay.
Okay, one is a service personnel.
And as far down as it goes anyway, is your brother-in-law. That's your close kin, but you have to watch what you're voting on.
She's my niece-in-law, so I'm... Okay, I'll just have to abstain from the reemployment of Eddie, right? On D.
So you have to determine that it's Eddie, Albert Eddie. We do use a good Albert, don't we?
Yeah.
But, you know, we all know it's Eddie, I noticed what you just talked about there. We have no other Eddie.
Okay, this time I'll ask for a vote on the performance of Eddie Smith.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes, except Mrs. Smith, she abstained. Okay, this time I'll ask for a vote on all the other personnel items.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes. Okay, now, do you have any long-term concerns?
Well, I'm, what I'm going to say about personnel is that they do have a deal introduced to make the changes of the dates of personnel season back to partially what it...
Close to what it used to be.
Close to what it used to be. One of the things that is in it, that you all will hear about, if it passes, my question is going to be, when is it going to be effective? If it's effective this coming school year, they've changed, you know, how you're not to move people five days prior to the first instructional day. They changed it to twenty, you know, and if it's effective...
Twenty.
To the twentieth day, prior to the first instructional day. So, of course, we'd have to figure out when our first instructional day is. Now, to count back, and that may, you know, create an issue of moving people.
Eliminate this, make it bigger.
Well, that's the part that is probably would be more concerning, you know, for us, because what we would have to do is get that information out to all employees, so that they know, once they get into a position, you know, even though it used to be the fifth day prior to, now it would be the twentieth day prior to, so... That's part of a comment. I didn't know if you all had any concerns about the flooding, you know, that took place, and had any questions? We had one bus that, in the Duval area, that was, had some water up and around, but that bus has been towed here. And the state inspector will be here tomorrow in order to inspect, to make sure that there isn't any damage.
Do you need pictures of that bus? I've been advised that they can be obtained.
Well, Mr. Cummings wanted me to make sure that you all were aware that he has the inspector coming tomorrow, and...
Did it get on the, it sort of didn't get into school at all?
Well, Dana said it got in the area where the elevator...
The stairwell, on the cafeteria side of the building. That was where the water got in there.
It's a little bit low there.
He said it wasn't the flooded water.
That wasn't the gymnasium, man. He said there was some water got into the building that actually come off the hillside out of here.
Very hilarious.
Yeah, it's a real problem back there.
He also said the Hamlin Fire Department had gone and cleaned off the walkway or the parking lot and playground area. Playground area, yes.
Well, it looked like it was up there, a couple of feet on that fence.
It was up on the steps, actually, going up to the annex. It was much deeper than I thought.
Did any of our schools, I'm telling you.
Did any of our children lose their homes or anything? I think several of our students, yes, had some water in their homes and had some issues.
If they did, the big four, around thirty-seven. I don't know why they wouldn't, I mean, if they escaped with nothing, it would have been very lucky.
Well, Mr. Lincolne actually admitted to him the scene, and he said they had gone up the bin there had been sun.
Oh, it's devastation.
When you go over that hill on thirty-seven to Wayne County, it wiped it out. I went over there today, and I mean, it wiped it out. A friend of mine, she was carrying things out of her house...
A friend of mine, she was carrying things out of her house, her, it took her whole backside of her house off and her ceilings fell in. And she said they were there, but my daughter, who was in Kentucky, she said lots of her kids lost their homes.
He said it was close to there?
Yeah, but no, it didn't hurt Heather's home. Didn't hurt her.
Actually, they said it was an EF three. County.
She said it was four.
In Wayne County, West Liberty, yes, it came straight from West Liberty and right through Kentucky and right into West Virginia and seven's an EF three. Unbelievable. Two hundred yards wide.
Well, people found the debris from over there all over the place, I thought we found some things in our driveway.
Exactly.
Then we got away holiday papers.
That balloon from?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
My gosh.
Well, Heather said she spent all day, yes, day of Sunday, trying to figure out where her kids were in order to get buses to them to get them to school today.
In order to their homes, I think.
And were just scattered all over.
Yeah. They lost a lot, which is unbelievable when you look at that.
Did you see that poor mother, I know we're getting off subject, the poor mother, the loss of her legs?
Yes.
That's awful.
That she worried that whole child was turning out, missed the elevation that, that man that had taken them in the distance. They said he was forty feet in the air and he went four hundred yards or something, but he survived, but that whole family was killed.
Did that baby die too?
Yeah. I mean, that man, can you imagine?
That's unusual, usually when they, they get you, the debris just beats you to death inside of the turnoff.
And then when you hit the ground.
Yeah.
How'd you live?
Kenzie, she's just turned seven, she was under Heather's desk in her office and crying, and Heather said she was reaching down there, holding her hand, and she said, Mom, you better check on me, I'm happy. And we were in Florida.
I think there had been some watering in the buildings on the ball field, is that what that is?
Yes, on the football field. The fieldhouse, locker rooms. Water was maybe a couple of feet.
Wanted to bring you today kind of on the air conditioners at Guyan Valley. Dana said everyone had signed, if all of the people around had signed the right of way for the poll, except us. To be able to set, the power, the power company will be able to set a poll. Kind of thinks they will be in such a hurry right now because of all of the power outages that we're moving, but that is coming along. There, it had some movement as far as he indicated that, what, Jeff?
Well, I'm afraid you understand this more so than me, that as far as.
But you were there, we explained it, you haven't always understood it.
As far as, you know, the boxes, everything that needed to be in place, that work's being done, that our, our, you know, our people can actually kind of complete that and finish it, so we'd be ready on our end.
Yeah.
We'd just be waiting on that, on the power company.
And that going to take a day or so.
That'd be great, yes, that's number one.
So, just thought I'd let you all know about that particular situation, because it is, we forget sometimes about what's happening. But that's, that's all I have right now that I can think of. Do you all have any things that you want me to check on or?
Yeah, I have something. I mentioned this to another board member quite some time ago, probably a year ago. As you approach Duval Middle School, you're coming from the Yawkey area. I feel there's a, really a pressing need to have a flashing warning sign that shows that there is a school zone there. When you approach the school, all you see is a little sign that's within fifty feet of the school, right in a curve. It's a very dangerous situation.
Well, I know that, I'll have Mr. Smith check on that, but I know there's been discussion previously about the state not allowing us to do that, is that correct?
I was principal there, we had the flashing lights and they were removed. And what we were advised was that the state, the brother or whoever's over there, would not permit that, that we weren't allowed to have those.
Why?
I never.
Question is why?
Well, I asked that question because even had people come, because I would say, well, I went out here to intersection of thirty-four and sixty, what is that, Lakeview School or whatever, and they've got them there and, you know. You go all over. You go all over the place and you see them, and I never could quite understand why we couldn't have one, but at that time, they said it was, Dana Smith, you know, was there.
We don't know what that criteria is, we'll have to ask, yes, I'll rent it down.
Because we were opposed to it being removed there, just like you're saying today.
If you're approaching from the Hamlin side, you can readily see that you're entering a school zone. But if you come from the Yawkey area, you're in the school zone immediately after going through that curve and you don't see that sign until the last minute. That's assuming you're a stranger coming through there or a big tractor-trailer making its first trip through there. It's really, it's dangerous, it's extremely dangerous.
Well, and some people complained that, you know, when school's not in session or the hours, you know, those lights run, but we religiously, you know, when you programmed that thing, we made a point to make sure that, you know, we worked off of spring break, I turned that thing off, or, you know, if we weren't there, we didn't use it, so it wasn't like, you know, the flow of traffic was being interrupted when it was in school. We, you know, we made efforts to make sure that wasn't a problem.
Most of these buildings are self-powered, I don't know how they're programmed, you free it, you have any idea?
Well, you could program them just like you could ordinary electric.
On the, on the post itself?
Yeah, yeah. Ours was inside, you just went in there, it was a little control box.
But you had to have electric out there, what we're talking about is to furnish your own electric. Solar panel.
This has come up in the past several years, several times about it, all of our schools, you know, on roads about that. Same answer, I think, it's the same road.
Okay, because we ordered them for the, for the signs up there at Hart's.
I never understood, because our PTO at that time, you know, brought up the issue of having, having to have them removed and that's when some people came from the state and met with us and all, my parents were completely counseled, just like, well, you know, you aren't allowed to have those here for whatever reason.
That's what I was told also, and even about over here at the high school, that we were not allowed to have them. And, but the last time I talked to Scott Ellsworth with the Department of Highways in Huntington, he said that it had been approved to get them for the Hart's new school up there and West Hamlin Elementary there on the Dairy Road. Now, while they would approve them for two schools and not our other sign.
What about Guyan Valley?
I know.
It doesn't make any sense.
Are on these main highways would be.
Well, here in Hamlin, middle school.
Every school, each.
Yes, exactly.
Now, one time there was a legal, legal issue that if you left them on, when the school wasn't in session and a wreck occurred, you was responsible for it. If somebody slowed down, they saw that cost them life.
Oh, I see.
And someone ran in the back of them, it was the school district, now that's one reason, I mean, now that may have changed, that was when I was on the board before, it was a legal issue.
But that would be true of these other campuses too.
Well, that's exactly right, yes. What I'm saying is you'd have to maintain the time on them extremely.
Religiously.
Yeah, you may be able to do it a lot easier now, you might be able to do it by.
By wireless.
Or by computer.
Yeah, by wireless.
Yeah.
At Guyan Valley years ago, there was a student killed.
More than one person.
I told you, a student Guyan Valley, a student killed on the road, of course, that was years and years ago.
Okay.
Yes.
I guess, I guess we owe Chris or Jeff a thank you for using our foresight for calling school law for letting us out.
Two, this one.
Capital County took off Friday and then they had to take off Jeff's.
I was scanning that screen, I didn't realize it at first, what it was, and I said, where's ours on there?
Did you keep looking outside, you see all that?
I did the same thing.
Yeah, I mean, I do.
I wouldn't look as a calendar tag.
Two weeks ago, they knew all about this.
What are we now, as far as number of school days, as far as meeting the one eighty, are we?
We're still around target.
We're on target, we've made it up, we already made that day in.
We made it there last Friday. Just hoping why not?
Oh, why not?
Or floods.
Floods or windstorms.
Or anything.
Earthquakes or force fires.
Yes, doors.
Okay, if that's all, we'll ask for motion or second adjournment until March of twenty.
I'll move.
Sophia?
I'll second, but I'm asking, or what time is that March twenty?
It will be five.
Is that?
Five, because we have, we have at least one hearing and probably two, we may have personnel hearing also.
Five P M.
Is that, is that early enough?
I don't know, we may not even hear one. That letter that we're sending out tomorrow is giving the option of hearing on that same day. And then we have a student hearing, so I don't know if the board, could the board meet at four?
If, if we do both, would you leave at five o'clock, thanks for the time.
I think we do more times than that.
Before call, would that, would that even be enough time? I don't know, we may have to wait when we find out if some other person's going to ask for a hearing.
If we do that, if we meet at four and then it only takes like, say thirty, forty minutes, do we still wait to six to have our?
Well, we could, couldn't we go ahead?
Yeah, just like we did tonight.
Yeah, just like we did tonight.
The student hearing will. The student hearing will probably.
We base everything.
Last long time personnel hearings, if they even ask of us.
Right. Are you going to try four o'clock?
Here is it, your motion?
Pending the request for a personnel hearing, this person hasn't asked for a hearing yet. They may, but we're anticipating.
Well, we, we have to go on the assumption when we're together, right?
Well, I mean, we, we can change the time, as long as we do it three days, we can amend or adjourn the three days or two days, actually.
That's what Carol was asking, I think, weren't you?
Yeah.
Okay, so Carol, your motion is at four o'clock?
Term this meeting until four P M on March of twenty.
Twenty, so I'll say.
How do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.